That's all I ended up with it. So I just always bring it to every meeting.
They get missing.
Yeah, I don't know how they got it.
Me too.
I don't know where it came from, how, like I said, we found.
They still up on the company. I'm gonna go along. They still up on. Fred, we want you to know right now, council.
Listen, last time. I, I, I know where it's at.
I was looking for the ISDN number maybe, you know?
Hmm.
But I don't, I don't, I don't see it.
Then I wonder if somebody got the Bible and they gave it to them too, or is they the place with Bible? You know what I mean? Cause some Bible places have.
And, and Councilman, um, Green did come out. Look, you see we got on.
What did I tell you? He, he was gonna throw it off. Cause her and, um, Shaquon got on gray. Me and the mayor got on stripes. I said, I saw Fred, but then I said, he gonna come. I told him he's different. It's all right. We'll take different. Yeah.
Uh, Seda has a little update that they wanted the mayor to read for humans. So during the presentation.
There's a presentation on here? Oh, in here.
There's not a presentation, but just once we get to that section.
Oh, okay. Let's see what's on here. Hope we ain't got no crazy words. All right.
It's just an update for Seda.
Okay. Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. Mm-hmm. No, you're fine. Oh, he got his. These are on.
Nah, nah, we're always good.
Well, good morning if they heard me. I forgot they'd be watching it in there.
You pushed the.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to the City of Chester. City Council meeting for Wednesday, January 8th, our first council meeting of the year. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
We're gonna start off as we normally do with an invocation and a pledge to the flag. We have our chaplain, Lisa Dennis, who will provide us with the invocation. All rise.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let us pray. Father, before we ask you for anything, we wanna thank you for everything. On behalf of the City of Chester, Mayor, Council and Chester Government, Leadership, we pray that this year be not just another year, but a new year with new ideas, new relationships, new resources, new policies, new information, new partnerships, new growth and new opportunities. We believe that all things work together for them that love you and are called to your service. We pray for effective government practices. We pray for safety and prosperity and peace in our streets. We pray blessings and strength for our police and firefighters. We pray for your guidance during this council meeting and throughout this year. It is in your name we pray with Thanksgiving. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lisa Dennis, for the invocation. I wanna thank you again for your efforts in 2024 with my request that we have someone different every council meeting from clergy or, you know, spiritual folks from around town. She's been the person who's scheduled them, provided them. We have 24 council meetings throughout the year, maybe 25 if we do three in December. And you, you came through like a champ. So thank you so much. I think it's given us a lot of exposure to, uh, you know, folks around town that we may have not ordinarily seen. And our clerk reads a lot, so that's one less burden on her. But what is the burden on her is to do the roll call.
Counselors Gibson, Williams.
Present.
Green.
Present.
Davis.
Present.
Mayor Roots.
Present.
Can I get a motion to approve minutes from the December 9th budget meeting, the December 9th council meeting, the December 18th council meeting and this week's organization meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And there are none opposed. Thank you. This is time for you guys to contribute public comment on agenda items only. The agendas, if you didn't grab one, are right outside the door. If you do have any comments, just step to the mic. And I see none. So we'll move on. This is our time, time to shine up here. Any old business, new business we wanna discuss, council?
Um, I'll first just like to say good morning, um, to everyone and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Welcome back. We're gonna be off to a great start. I look forward to doing some great things here in the City of Chester and a lot of improvements and looking forward to working with mayor and council so we can continue to move, uh, this city forward. And I'll, I often say that Philadelphia and Wilmington are sister cities. And so I had the pleasure last night of attending, um, the Wilmington City Council, um, inaugural celebration with the governor, uh, with the mayor and, uh, with all of the new city councils. So I just wanna congratulate them. And I was speaking with the, uh, the former governor who is, just got sworn in as mayor uh, last night and his mother is from Chester. So they was born and raised in Chester. They moved to Delaware and, uh, so they got some deep roots. And so I just wanna send a big congratulations out to them and look forward to working with them and other sister cities and other, um, municipalities and cities around the country. So that's all I have.
Good morning, everyone. Happy New Year. Y'all can say it back.
Good morning.
Um, our first year on council, well, my first year on council was, um, very encouraging, but it's really good to work with mayor and council to move the City of Chester forward. And I thank all of you who continuously come out to the meetings and give your input. And so I say thank you for that. And thank you to all of the directors and other staff members for, um, all of the good work that you're doing here in our city. And so I just say thank you. And we're gonna be off to a good start and I'm excited about what's gonna happen with this new year.
Yes.
Well, I'm not gonna take up too much time. Good morning and Happy New Year again. Um, I would just like to say that it's an honor to be here again this year, um, serving with you all as the last year, serving with the mayor and council was an absolute honor and privilege to just, uh, see the way the City of Chester would like to go and how we can communicate in doing so. Um, I think that going forward to this year, something I communicated to those who follow me on social media and those that I reach out to in the community is, uh, the goal is communication this year. Communicate, um, new initiatives. Um, during the prayer I heard, communicate, um, you know, new information, communicate between each other so that we were always on the same page. And, um, talking to the police commissioner over the break, I like to communicate, um, you know, we all are one city or one community. And let's go into this year focusing on being better than we were last year. And that goes for everything, just being multifaceted, good people, you know, saying good morning. It's okay to hold the door for somebody. It's okay to just check on somebody. If we can take those steps to be better people every day, I promise you all as the elected official that I am and working with my colleagues, that our community will continue to thrive and continue to be better. So that's something that I really wanted to communicate and focus, uh, going into the 2025. You know, communicate and focus on, you know, one day at a time, just being a better person and watch how we as a community, as a family, as a city can achieve and aspire greatness. So thank you all and I'm looking forward to a great 2025.
Thank you. And I'm um, just one more thing. I do wanna give a shout out to the Public Works Department. I didn't slip and slide the other day. So you guys was out there working and I know they, uh, was clearing up the streets. So I just wanted to thank you guys. I know, uh, they was being proactive and also while, uh, many institutions was closing and, um, shutting their doors, they thought it was gonna be this huge snowstorm. Uh, Chester, we was open for business. And so I wanna thank all of our employees and all of our directors. And, uh, you know, all of the staff that came in and worked and really just show your commitment, um, to the City of Chester and our residents. So thank you and thank you to our police department and our fire department. Cause they was busy and I just wanna appreciate, uh, and show you guys our appreciation. We appreciate you for showing up every day for the City of Chester and its residents. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right. Good job. Uh, Council Lady West is not here today. She had a family emergency, but she would have been next. I will share with, with you guys a few things. On Monday, the day that we chose to stay open, we had a meeting. It was our organization meeting. We had no public here, so I'm just gonna share with you, uh, the things that were covered. Number one, uh, Council Lady West has been reappointed as our deputy mayor. And Candace Newsome and Joan Neal have been reappointed as our clerk and assistant clerk, associate clerk, assistant clerk?
Assistant.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
That would've been a really short meeting if that was all that was covered, but we had one other thing. You may have, you may remember that we are all, uh, committee members. We started committees last year. One of the things that I did and had our council people look over and give their input was re- restructure our committees. So we're down to five committees. I'll just name them and name the chair. We have a public service, public safety committee that I'll be chairing, budget and finance committee that Councilman Davis will chair, public works committee, Council Lady West will chair, a recreation committee that Council Lady Gibson-Williams is chairing and a housing and community development committee that Councilman Green will be chairing. So stay tuned for those committee meetings. They're open to the public. They're also live streamed. So that's that. Block captains. That was a initiative that I really wanted to get launched in 2024. We kinda just made it at the end of 2024. We had some early meetings in the year. There was a lot of interest in the block captain program. There were over 30 individuals who will be block captains, have chosen to be block captains, but we felt we needed to put together a block captain committee to kinda oversee the block captains. So the committee was identified and selected at the end of 2024. The first meeting of that committee will be this upcoming Monday. Is that correct? This upcoming Monday. So once they meet, they'll be reaching out to those that have volunteered to be block captains. And there will also be a is there a form that we're gonna have online for? Yeah, please.
Uh, yeah. Good morning, everybody. Um, yeah. So the first committee meeting will be on Monday as Mayor Roots just shared. Uh, we want them really to be the ones who will, you know, carry the program forward, but, uh, we expect that there will be some sort of, you know, brief application for block captains to apply for the program and that they'll start selecting, uh, block captains across the city who can help with cleaning up and communication. And I believe that Mayor Roots' goal is that they would have a big first launch event sometime, hopefully early spring. So uh, I, I think that's kinda the expectation. Hopefully we'll get the block captain committee on track for that timeline.
Thank you. You stole my number four and that's thanking the Public Works Department for the great work that they did on Monday. It was a great, great opportunity to take a trial run at what, what could be, uh, looks like a cold winter this year. So if things get any worse, we certainly took care of it on day one. I've gotten a lot of phone calls and a lot of compliments on you guys. So great job. I want to introduce to some, present to others, Dr. Kristin Motley. She is now the city's health commissioner for our Department of Public Health. I think I did see her. There she is. Stand up, say hi. Or just stand up. Thank you. She is a real doctor, PhD of pharmacy. You know, she could be working anywhere in hospitals and drugstores, but she is always committed to working with the community. I know she helped me when I was caring for my parents. We know how confusing it can be when you have all these prescriptions that are prescribed from, you know, like maybe your various, various doctors, your various specialists. Uh, my dad was at the VA hospital and he had all those drugs. And, and sometimes doctors don't intend for you to continue to be using drugs and some counter, don't, don't work well with others. So she was that, that person who would come in and kinda sort them out and say, oh no, please don't take this one because it doesn't work with that one. And that's the kinda help a lot of us need. But here in the city, her real, uh, objective is to address the disparities of health that are so prevalent here in our city. And one of the first initiatives is the Lead Task Force in collaboration with, uh, Swafmore College and their Black Alumni Association or one of their Black Alumni Associations. They chose that project to be the one that they back. So thank you. Thank you for joining us. Thank you so much. Um, in the same spirit as, as you, you went down to Wilmington last night. I went up to Harrisburg last night to witness the Pennsylvania Legislative Black Caucus swearing in. It was great to be up there and, and make those connections with, with our state government. And as, uh, Councilman Green said, it's, it's all about these relationships and these connections, whether it's, you know, Harrisburg, Washington DC, or our neighbors in Wilmington and Philadelphia and Camden. Many of them deal with the same issues and, and, and problems and situations that we do. So it's very important to, to establish those relationships. And Justin, I'm counting on you again to give us an update on a not advertised on that sheet that's outside Martin Luther King Day event.
Sure. Uh, yeah. So we have, uh, tried to put flyers for upcoming events around the City of Chester, um, outside on the table. And, uh, we also post these events. Um, they're not necessarily city sponsored, but just, you know, uh, events that are open and accessible to the public around the city. We post those on website and social media. So you can see all the different places at the bottom of the sheet where you can follow the City of Chester and see what's going on around town. Um, but on the back of the sheet are a couple, um, Martin Luther King Day, uh, events or weekend events that are coming up, um, that weekend. But one event that, uh, a flyer will be made for, but is not yet made for is there's one other MLK Day event on January 20th. Uh, there's gonna be a breakfast at the Union Stadium, Union Yards, um, followed by a march from the stadium up to the Fourth Street CAT Center where there will be some opportunities for service and lunch and other activities that'll be happening. So, um, mayor and council will be participating in that event as well as other events, uh, happening around the city that day. Uh, so just wanted to make you guys aware and keep an eye out for a flyer for that event as well. It's just not on the sheet yet.
All right. Thank you. Now it's time to go to work. There are no ordinances. Madam Clerk, with the resolutions.
Resolution, the council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby appoint the following individuals to the position of patrol officer, Chester Police Department, effective January 8th, 2025. Commissioner? Are we not doing Monday, the 6th?
No, we're going with this date if you can't.
Okay. Just wanted to double check that. My apologies, everyone. Effective January 8th, 2025 with a one-year probationary period on a full-time basis of all benefits applicable thereto at the salary range provided in the annual appropriation ordinance. Number one, Leroy Whitaker and number two, Angel Carrion Jr. Father said patrol officers required to reside within 50 miles of Chester City Hall.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments?
Yes. Um, Commissioner, I thought we did, um, didn't they pass an ordinance to take away the residency requirement?
The residency requirement is not up there. It's 50 miles has to be within boroughs I do. There's no more, uh, city residency requirement where the officers have to reside in the city.
Okay, just within 50 miles of the city.
Fifty miles direct.
Okay.
And I encourage you guys to stick around. We're gonna be swearing in both those officers this morning.
Counselors Gibson, Williams.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby appoint Alicia Stewart-Martin as a member of the Chester Housing Authority Board to fill the expired term of Sheila Church term to expire December 31st, 2028.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson, Williams.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve a memorandum of understanding for each union representing employees of the City of Chester, setting a wage increase of 3% for the year 2025. All other terms and conditions of the prior contracts shall remain the same and in full effect for each union represented below. Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 19, International Association of Firefighters, Local 1400, and International Brotherhood of Teamsters, Local 107. Father, it does ratify the execution of a memorandum of understanding for each of the aforementioned unions by the proper city official.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? I'll make a, a short comment that the real important word and, or phrase in this, uh, resolution is this 3% increase for the year 2025, all other terms and conditions of the prior contracts. It says prior because there's a few of these, if not all, are out of their contract period and they're being negotiated now. It is not normal that you would give raises when there is no settled, uh, agreement with these unions, but we are in a position, uh, financially that we can and we will and we did. So I'm really proud of the fact that, uh, those of us who are union-covered employees are continuing to get raises even while their contracts are being negotiated. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson, Williams.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the City of Chester made a request for proposal known as RFP Number 2024 dash 004 for the law enforcement accreditation consultant with responses due December 2024. And whereas the City of Chester has complied with all appendage use requirements. And whereas the silk quotes have been tabulated with no discrepancies found. Now therefore, the council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby award the law enforcement accreditation consultant project to aspiring consulting group in amount not to exceed $62,500. Father said contract is contingent upon final review and approval of the city solicitor.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? This resolution is to bring our police department up to state standard. Not that we aren't already, but this accreditation is, uh, very significant. It's a very significant, uh, thing to have. So what this does is give, give, give the, uh, make the funds available for the consultant that's gonna help our police department get to the point of an accredited police department here in the state of Pennsylvania. Really looking forward. It's gonna be a long process, but it's certainly a significant one. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson, Williams.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the City of Chester made a request for proposal known as RFP Number 2024 dash 005 for the Chester Cleanways ARPA project with responses due on October 27th, 2024. And whereas the City of Chester has complied with all appendage use requirements. And whereas the silk quotes have been tabulated with no discrepancies found. Now therefore, the council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby award the Chester Cleanways ARPA project to bridle maintenance in the amount of $76,834. Father said contract is contingent upon final review and approval of the city solicitor.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I do have a comment, um, cause I wanna explain to the public what the Chester Cleanways ARPA is so that they know what we're talking about.
Sure. Well, ARPA is the American Rescue Plan dollars that came in, uh, 30 million-ish dollars that came to the city. This is, uh, 76,000 of that money that's gonna go right back into the community to do just what mayor and council want to do, and that's beautify the City of Chester. So there, this, this, the term Chester Cleanways is just the term that we're putting on it. We've selected through a through a selection process that this company, Brau, Brow, Browdel Maintenance will be the ones that will be responsible for designated areas in the town to make sure that, you know, the illegal dumping is, is managed. And they will be, right behind me is our central business district. So like cities, you'll see uniformed people out there just sweeping up or, you know, keeping the area clean. They'll be responsible for the downtown area too. So it's just help. It's, it's a two-year contract for $76,000 to get some help in keeping our city clean. Gives our public, Public Works Department, uh, a little relief. Any other questions, comments? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson, Williams.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby accept the US Department of Commerce's Economic Development Administration's known as EDA recompete strategy development grant and will comply with all of the terms and conditions as identified in the attached general terms and conditions and the specific award conditions of the US Department of Commerce and any other specified award conditions as required by EDA.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson, Williams.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania authorized award of a redevelopment assistance capital program known as RAPP grant any amount of $4 million on behalf of Keystone Sports and Entertainment LLC and Union Sportsplex LLC for the development of the Philadelphia Union Sportsplex Project known as the project. And whereas the Chester Economic Development Authority was designated as a grantee to partner with Keystone Sports and Entertainment LLC and Union Sportsplex LLC as sub-grantees in connection with the administration of the project. And whereas the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has authorized the termination of the RAPP grant agreement with the Chester Redevelopment Authority for the Union Square Area Improvement Project in the amount of $1,500,000 and the reallocation of such funds to the project. And whereas the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has authorized award of an additional $4 million in RAPP funding for the project. And whereas one of the RAPP requirements is a submission of an executed cooperation agreement between the city as the host municipality and the sub-grantees in which the city approves the project and which obligates the city to reimburse the Commonwealth for any RAPP grant reimbursements that may later be determined to have been ineligible expenses for the project. And whereas this matter has been reviewed and con- And whereas this matter has been reviewed and considered. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve, number one, that the cooperation agreement by and between the City of Chester and the sub-grantees, or, excuse me, is hereby approved. And number two, that the mayor and/or his designee is hereby authorized to execute the agreement and to take such steps as may be necessary to implement the intent of this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselor Gibson Whams?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas as part of Consolidated Rail Corporation, corporation, hm, known as Conrail, maintenance responsibility, the City of Chester, known as city, proposes to install pavement adjacent to the railroad on Highland Avenue to support a multi-use trail in accordance with the city-approved construction plans hereinafter referred to as the project. And whereas the project is eligible for financing with federal highway funds. And whereas the tracks of railroad are located adjacent to the start of the proposed multi-use trail adjacent to the intersection of Highland Avenue and West Front Street. And whereas Conrail agrees as part of the construction work to furnish and maintain any flagmen, watchmen, construction inspectors, and/or engineering services that may be deemed necessary to protect and safeguard its railroad facilities and the operations of the railroad during the time the city's contractor is actively working on or adjacent to the railroad property. And whereas there will be no adjustment to railroad's existing facilities as part of the project. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city official to enter into a railroad certification compliance agreement with Consolidated Railroad Corp- Corporation known as Conrail for repair of the tracks crossing Highland Avenue as part of the Highland Trail connection between Route Two-Ninety-One and the Waterfront Trail. Further, the project is being funded through the Pennsylvania Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? I'm going to just take a moment to brag about what this is really all about. Uh, East Coast Greenway is that trail that's going to go from Maine to Florida. At one point, you'll be able to walk, bike, run from Maine to Florida, right through the City of Chester. If you've been down to the waterfront, you know there's a kind of a walkway or a trail right on the waterfront from like Nar Street all the way to Highland. What this will do is, this is part of the connection. So there will be a trail that will go straight down Two-Ninety-One, one end of the city to the other, pretty, pretty much the whole length of the city. And then there'll be sort of a, 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 a turnoff at Nar Street where you can go down to the river, connect to the trail that's already at the river, and come up Highland Avenue where a trail is going to also connect from the river to Two-Ninety-One. So this has to do with the Highland Avenue section. I just chuckle because all these words simply say that the trail is going to be laid out by the people who do trails, but that portion of the railroad track on Front Street, we can't touch. So this is where, um, Conrail gets involved. It says here, the repair of the tracks crossing at Highland Avenue. There's nothing broke that they're repairing, but they're just making it consistent with what needs to be done for a trail. So that's what this is about. But we're really excited that all the funding is in place for Nar Street and Highland Avenue to be complete, um, by twenty twenty-six for sure, but Highland Avenue is going to be first. So look for a little construction for those of you who might drive down Highland Avenue as that trail is created from Two-Ninety-One to the river. And this resolution just addresses that part that crosses the tracks. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson Whams?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes. Good job, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Want to give an opportunity for our chief. You have anything to report?
No, sir.
Uh, our controller's not here. Any directors, anything to report? No? Okay, great.
Do you want to mention anything about your executive session later?
Okay, we can mention that now. Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. We're going to have an executive session, uh, following this meeting on a property issue.
Mayor, uh, I think we also have a report that the clerk could read.
Yep. That's...
So that's why I was asking, were we swearing in before we did all that? So you want me to do the pre- and read this first and then?
Yeah, let's read that first, thanks.
No problem.
And we'll get all that out of the way.
All right, let me just move my little stuff around here.
She reads better than I do, that's why I passed it to her.
There is an update on the development process of the twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-nine Consolidated Plan, Annual Action Plan, and Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice Community Development Block Grant and Home Programs. This comes from CETA. An initial needs hearing was held on November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four to provide information on the development of the Consolidated Plan, Action Plan, and Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice. Over the next several weeks, consultants will be held with, excuse me, consultations will be held with various stakeholder groups and individuals who are focused on areas such as affordable housing, public services, employment, et cetera, to obtain input on the priority needs that can be addressed with Community Development Block Grant and Home Funds. There will be resident and agency survey forms available on the city's and Chester Economic Development Authority's website. Hard copies of forms will also be available from CETA's office at City Hall. You can send an email to joannarourke@jar, the at symbol, ceta.cc to obtain a copy of a form. Now, I'm reading this, I'm assuming we're going to put it on the website and it'll also be attachment to the meeting. Completed forms can be dropped off to CETA or returned via email to Joanne. By mid-February, a draft of the documents will be completed. They will be available for review and comment from March third through April fourth, twenty twenty-five. Another public hearing will be held in council chambers at ten a.m. on Tuesday, March the eleventh, twenty twenty-five, to obtain comments and/or questions on the documents. City Council is scheduled to consider approval of the twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-nine Consolidated Plan, twenty twenty-five Action Plan, and the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Copies of the schedule are available on the table outside of council chambers.
I'm sorry?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If that made no sense to anybody, those of you who do contribute or do want to participate, I should say, in the community block, community development block grants, that's what that was about. So it's time to apply, it's time to put your projects in, it's time to request. That's the short version. I think we're ready to swear in some officers.
Officer Leroy Whitaker, front and center, please.
This is exciting. This is exciting. You're going to repeat after me. Okay, I, Leroy Whitaker.
I, Leroy Whitaker.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the Charter of the City of Chester. And that I will discharge the duties of the office of police officer with fidelity. Well, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Officer Angel, front and center.
Repeat after me. I, Angel Carrion, June.
I, Angel Carrion, June.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the Charter of the City of Chester and that I will discharge the duties of the office of police officer with fidelity. You did it. All right, we're going to...
So what you're going to do is say a few words to the residents that you serve.
Good morning. Happy New Year to everybody. I'm a little nervous, y'all got bad... I just want to say, um, thank you to the city council for the opportunity. Thank you to the mayor, the commissioner, and the major to go out, um, and have faith in me because I already made mistakes and I'm going to make much more. I'm willing and I'm happy to serve my community where I'm from and to help in any way possible.
Good morning, Happy New Year. Just want to give thanks to the Chester City Council, the mayor, the commissioner, and, uh, the major for the opportunity to serve the city and its residents. And I also want to give a big thanks to my family and my loved ones for the support in making this decision. Love y'all.
I just want to say, what a great way to open up twenty twenty-five. Isn't this what we want our police force to be? Of course, we take every qualified candidate and, and we put them through the wringer, whether it's the physical test, the oral test, or the interview that I do get to, uh, take part in. But, you know, we all would love to see our homegrown products, and that's what we have here. Two homegrown products who wants to do public safety. They're going to be great examples for our young people around town, and not so young people who are eligible to apply. This guy constantly, constantly, I, I'm with him out in the streets. He's like, "Apply, apply, apply." It's one of the few jobs that constantly has an opening here in city government. So guys, you're going to be the example to many. I'm really proud. I've known Leroy for probably ten years now. Uh, I think he was fourteen years old when I first met him. We have a special relationship, me, him, and his brother. And I know this gentleman here is, uh, has, has some relationship to someone on council. So that's really a close connection between us and city government and the connection that the city is just really special. What a way to open the year. You guys have made my day. I can go home now.
So good morning. I'm not going to hold too much of your time. So, uh, Officer Whitaker, Officer Carrion, started the academy in July of two thousand twenty-four. Prior to that, they came out, they took the required, uh, testing, passed the background investigation, and took the challenge. And that's the big thing, because from what we do this test, we might see anywhere between ten to thirty applicants that apply. And then slowly through the P.T. test, the written exam, the list starts to dwindle. During graduation, when we were there, I heard one of the, I guess it would be one of their cadet captains said, "No, Officer Whitaker asked a lot of questions." And for me speaking with you two, continue to ask some questions. There's no such thing as an insufficient question. And also what I tell you to do is, today's a special day, just not for you, but for your family. Start a journal. So when you start a journal and write things down, because it's usually the way you look. I look that way, and then my hair turn white. But more importantly, you talk about diversity, and, I mean, I call it, like I said, I hear the complaints of, you know, "Why don't we have any diverse officers coming out?" Well, guess what? We got someone from the east end and someone from the west end, and we're going to get this right. And I'll give you a little public service announcement now. We're going to be testing again, so somewhere around January, we're probably going to post maybe mid-February and then test in March. So please, spread the word. I mean, this is an example, and we hope you can build with homegrown people from the City of Chester. Thank you.
Hang up here for a little bit.
And, uh, I, I would just like to say, uh...
Thank you, but I want to give counsel an opportunity to say. Go ahead.
Um, I, I just want to say congratulations and welcome aboard to the City of Chester. And oftentimes, um, you know, people always say, "We need more officers that look like us, more officers that's from the city." And we have two officers that are from the city, born and raised. And I encourage other people from this city to apply and to follow in their footsteps. They're going to set a great example of what Chester makes, makes Chester.
I just want to second that thought. Um, congratulations again to our new members on board. Excited to have you. Uh, special congratulations to my, um, friend and graduate of high school together, Leroy. We went to school together, so I've known Leroy for, I don't know, the mayor said ten years, so I had to belong to Leroy for maybe eight, I don't know, ten, I don't know. But I've known Leroy for a really long time. He's a really good young man, um, and I'm excited to see the work that he's going to do in our community, and I'm excited to see, um, the police department continue to move forward.
I just want to say, welcome to the newly sworn-in officers, and I know they're going to do a wonderful job, but I wanted to extend a special, um, thank you to the families that support the officers because that makes a difference. And so thank you to the families, thank you for our community, and I'm excited about what these officers are going to bring to the City of Chester.
I failed to announce that there is a sheet for sign-up for public comment. We have four people signed up. We'll start with them, if anybody else who didn't know to sign up wants to have public comment, I'll give you that opportunity after we go through these four. Mr. Jake, I am not going to try to butcher your last name as spelled, so can you just please come up and tell us what your last name is? You have three minutes. So, man, you have twelve pages. Can you get all that in in three minutes?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Jacob Chmolaski. Uh, I am the owner of Jake's Tree Service located at Eight Ten West Fifth Street, Chester, PA, one nine zero one three. Uh, it was recently brought to my attention that some local residents and landlords attended some past council meetings with some complaints regarding the business operations on West Fifth Street. Uh, first and foremost, I'd like to say that we are not intentionally trying to upset or be a burden to any residents of the community. Matter of fact, we do strive to be a good neighbor. Since we moved into the city, we have taken place of part... Since we moved into the city, we have taken place of part in a number of community events, donated materials such as mulch to the fire departments during the spring, assisted the city with some tree removal and tree trimming projects, sponsored a few city teams, and , uh, other local Chester businesses, and even provided neighbors and the police department with copy of some camera footage during incidents that have taken place on the street, and worked with the residents on West Fifth Street to try and be accommodating as much as possible. In 2022, when we moved into our current shop location on West Fifth Street, we've completed all the steps required by the city for zoning as required. We turned in, we turned an entire, ran down city block into a new beautiful business located with lighting, fencing, and brand-new sidewalks, herbs and grass in front of the property. We worked with the neighbors to make sure our staff members were not forking in front of their homes because we know the residents all have their own spot on the street. I previously went door-to-door when we started getting complaints from residents and attempted to work out as much as possible. I handed out my personal cellphone number to all residents and told them they could call me anytime that there was an issue. I work closely with Mayor Kirkland and the city on these issues. Since then, we have slightly grown in size by about 20%. However, we did not change the day-to-day process or procedure. We did purchase and demo four row homes on the 800 block of Fifth Street that were falling down and had required permits to do so. This only beautified the street more. Regarding some of the things that were said in the last council meetings, I would like to clarify, number one, we do not manufacture mulch or sell mulch to anyone at Jake's Tree Service. What we do, however, is what some tree companies in the City of Chester have not done over the years. We crack down our bigger logs to smaller pieces and send them through a chipper, turning them into wood chips. These wood chips are then hauled out and recycled in the yard mulch and material. A number of locations in the city are now abandoned by tree companies, and larger logs are sitting there rotting away, causing a horrific eyesore to the community and a safety concern as well. Some of these locations include the media real estate property at 291 Carroll and another property at East 25th and Providence.
Mr. Jake, your three minutes is up, but I'm going to give you another 30 seconds.
All right, thank you, Mayor. The reason for this is because the cost of hauling, breaking down, and dumping these logs is extremely high. We have a professional operation that correctly gets rid of the material and keeps our property clean. We understand that some of the neighbors are complaining about the dust and the noise. We heard from the mayor of Chester one time regarding these complaints, and the DEP stopped down our yard as well after receiving a call, but also determined that the operation was going, was being completed correctly. They made some recommendations to control dust, including placing netting above our fencing to control some of that. We put that in place immediately. We also agreed to move our wood chip in and chipping area to the backside of the property along the train tracks, um, after speaking with some of the neighbors to limit noise. We are trying to be good neighbors, we care about the community, and we are open to communication with a number of the residents on West Fifth Street, but we also need to be able to operate our business. No operation of a wood chip or loading trucks are happening anytime other than between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM.
Mr. Jake, go to the last line of what you have written.
I'm at it right now, Mayor.
Oh, there we go.
We are willing to work with everyone as much as possible and try to keep our neighbors our friends. I just wanted the city officials and residents to know who I am, how I feel, and I am willing to work with everyone to ensure success for ourselves and the residents of the city in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, come on up. Just give us your name.
My name is Regetta Ross.
Regetta, there it is.
And I'm here to thank Sean, Ms. Roswell, and all the ones that come to faith and getting the trash picked up on Moore and Avenue. And the only thing I'm here for, Sean, and everybody else. And another thing, if the property taxes are going up, right?
No, they're not.
They're not?
The City of Chester is not, the City of Chester is not raising any taxes.
Oh, okay.
There's a $50 trash fee that's going up, but no taxes.
You're talking about Delaware County.
Delaware County, yes, ma'am.
They're going up.
Delaware County certainly is, yes.
What I don't understand, my mother's 60, 89 years old, right? Where she live at? They went up on her rent, $1,200, but nobody can come in and fix nothing for her. It's in her lease, right? Okay, I don't know who Mr. Shaw is, inspector. He was supposed to come down and inspect her house, never showed up. Two people from the, the realtor gang sat for two hours waiting on them. They never came to inspect our house, and I don't think it's fair. If you say you coming at a certain time, my mom look for you to be there. She ain't opening that door after a certain time, which I understand, but that's what I couldn't understand. If, if they going up on the taxes and they got the renters, why can't the renters come and fix what they supposed to do?
All right, we can address the, uh, yep, we have our Director of Economic Development back there. She's, there she is, her hand is raised. After the meeting, get with her. Let's get that address, and we'll make sure we get the inspection.
Right, and another thing I want to ask you about.
Oh, there's more.
Okay, you know how y'all said y'all gave the people $10,000 to do working out, right? How come homeowners didn't get, get a letter stating that that's what they was going to do? By the time I got all my papers together, they said the program was over. And I would like to have work done in my house. You know, if I could get it, I would love to get it.
Yeah, there was only a limited amount of money in that pot. Uh, the people who came out certainly got the message.
But I didn't get it.
Okay. There may be others who didn't get it, but it was publicized, and there was a line that went practically around the corner and outside, out front on the day that the applications were, uh, were started. We are looking to find more funds to continue that program because we know it wasn't enough. There may be as many as 60 or 70 people in the city who will qualify for this first round, and that's not nearly enough, and we, we recognize that. Uh, I promise you, we'll do a better job of communicating. I do not expect there'll be a letter sent to everybody's home. It's really going to be important to pay attention to these meetings, look at our social media. We're looking to do a, a project real soon that will help with, communications is a priority in 2025. Let me just say it that way. So I apologize for you not knowing about the program. I'm sure you're not alone. There's a lot of people who did hear about the program, and many of them couldn't even, uh, get what they needed. There was a set amount of money, I think it was a million dollars set aside between the administrative fees and, you know, figuring out what people were going to do with the money. Up to $10,000 was available for renovations in homes. We know we have a lot of old homes, we have a lot of issues, and this was our first attempt using, again, the ARPA money, the American Rescue Plan money that came to the city to serve the community in some kind of way. We all recognize it wasn't enough money, and we are looking to replenish that pot and do a second round. I don't know if that qualified. All right, thank you, Ms. Hilda, Hilda Campbell. Hey, cuz.
How are you?
I'm all right. Oh, here she comes.
This is a pillow.
Do I get to keep this?
You get to keep it.
I gotta put this on my financial, uh, disclosure.
It's one for you. Okay, I have a program called Dream Pillows, and it's all about the gun violence that happens within our city. Our former mayor said that when I was trying to get started, we didn't need another organization to handle grief. I tend to disagree. My grandson's mom was supposed to be here this morning, and I was supposed to then be back backing her up. So, give me a minute. The Dream Pillows are a process that helps us get through dealing with the grief of our loved ones. I've been producing these things for probably three or four years now because he's been gone for four years. And to get through that process takes a lot of work. One of the issues that happens within our community is when our loved ones are killed, people think that justice happens when the individual who did it gets caught. That still is no justice because getting caught and the other one going to jail resolves nothing for the family who has lost a loved one. But when we have no resolution, no support, and no information of our loved ones, period, that's even more traumatizing. So the trauma is compounded by the inactivity of those who are supposed to support us through the process of resolving the issue. And I don't know now whether City Council has anything to do with the process, and I'm really happy for the new police officers that were brought in from our community to help support our community, to provide assistance to the residents within our community. But four years ago, when my grandson was killed, he laid in the car on the street, and everything he owned was titled to my house. His car, his insurance, he lived with me. I did not get a call. We searched for him because we had no idea where he was because he always came to my house to put out the trash, and he didn't. So I had multiple emails, I mean, text messages that I sent to him and did not get responses. No one ever showed up at my house to tell me that my grandson was laying in a car on the street. He was even taken, I guess, to the morgue. I don't, I still don't even know where he ended up. But my son found out that my grandson was dead when his employer called him the next day.
30 seconds, Ms. Hilda.
30 seconds. 30 seconds is, I want to know why we've gotten no information or very limited information. The car is still not available to us, and it's been four years. His incidentals out of the car was given to his mother day before yesterday. And the necklace that was in the car, she still has not gotten because the detective has it locked up in his desk, and he's on defense.
All right, well, thank you. That's certainly nothing that mayor and council could address, but our commissioner put his hand up as if he wants to share.
Mayor, council, um, I'm very familiar with the case. Um, I actually met with Ms. Hilda and the family maybe two, three months ago. We had a meeting for about, it came in on, I believe it was a Sunday. We spoke Saturday. We spoke for about three hours. I've been in steady communication with the mother. Um, the mother was supposed to meet me a handful of times when she said she had a family emergency. I've text messaged, emails, or actually a group text with the father, and they didn't show up. But she did show up yesterday. I released all the items to them. Part of this has to do with the investigating officer sustained a head-on crash during chasing another homicide subject, which is no excuse because there's a county detective assigned along with Captain Morgan to investigate it now. The vehicle is currently still, uh, in holding. I've contacted the DA, which is, uh, Matthew Kraus, who reviews and signs off on all the warrants. He told me he will not release the vehicle due to, because it's still an act of homicide. So with him giving that, I can't get the vehicle released, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have an opportunity to tell Miss Hilda?
No, no.
If you want to set up a meeting with the family, we can meet back at my office this week if you want.
I just want to know why some people can't get to see people back when they're feeling death.
You've made your public comment. He's given you an opportunity to settle that.
If you want to meet with me and Captain Morgan this week, just come to my office, and my door's open, we'll have a meeting, please.
But this does prove and demonstrate, I should say, you know, how complicated many of these cases can become. You know, we have our police department here, we have our detectives. Much of what happens that requires detective work goes out to the county. As I said earlier today, as far as mayor and council and city government's concerned, we're very committed to improving communications. I'm not saying that that shouldn't be an emphasis for, you know, the police department as well, and even fire. Uh, it's, it's difficult to communicate to everybody on a steady basis at the degree in which, uh, you, you should have it, but we do need to improve. There needs to be improvement. Bonnie Waits. Ms. Bonnie, Happy New Year. You don't have to run. This isn't the, oh, okay. Bring that mic down just a little bit. Bring that down. There you go. Perfect.
First, I want to say Happy New Year. And also, I want to thank the, um, new council members, the mayor, for an encouraging 2024, okay? And hopefully will stay encouraged. I want to thank you for your communication and empathy towards the residents. Now, I'm here because, um, I appreciate all the monies that's being invested in the soccer stadiums, Fort Plaques, Highland Avenue, the train station. But my concern is there are residents that live on either side of 291. Nobody knows that. When you write down 291, it looks deserted, but we live there, and I have been advocating for years now, at least two years, to get pedestrian crossing signs in our community from Ward Street to Highland Avenue because there are residents, and nobody thinks that anybody lives down there. Only people that are recognized are the people that comes to the stadium for the games or whatever activities that are going on down there. But we live there, and we've been down there for years, and we can't get pedestrian crossing signs for the community. And I don't understand it. Andrew, I don't see him.
He's behind you.
Behind you. Oh, yeah, Andrew, he has been very helpful. I mean, giving me information about PennDOT. I see they put speed signs down there, but nobody pays any attention to them. They still go 75, 80, 90, and it says 35. But I feel if we could have pedestrian crossing signs, I would feel better when my grandchildren who live on the north side of 291 cross over to come to the me who live on the riverside. That's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Let's just, uh, clarify a couple things. The money that's being spent down at the, the stadium is, the stadium's money. Those guys are investing very heavily in the property and, you know, their franchise. The money that is being spent on the trail systems are mostly coming from grants. And then, as you acknowledged, uh, Route 291 is a Pennsylvania Department of Transportation piece of property. Everything that has to be done down there has to go through them, and they're very, takes a long time to get things through. One of the things that's finally going to come to light, I believe in 2025, is the traffic light at 291 in Jeffrey Street where the off-ramp is, that's a major source of, uh, of problems. There's also, uh, some work being done. I don't know if the construction will start next, this year or next, but the county planning department has been working with PennDOT to create what's called a road diet, and it is just what it sounds like. If you're familiar with Edgemont Avenue behind us, where it used to be four lanes, across from Deshong Park, I guess is a good, good marker, is now one lane. That's all in an attempt to slow down traffic. You're going to see the same type of thing down at, at 291. There's going to be restriping and more room for the people who live on 291 to get into their cars because it's crazy dangerous right now. You know, 291 was a great idea when it was designed and built, but we have seen over the years that it's just, just far too many accidents. You're going to see medians in the middle of the road, particularly down there near the stadium, where you will not be able to make a left turn on the 291 from the se- stadium, where you will not be able to make a left turn on the 291 from the city side of 291. That's where a lot of the accidents occur. You just can't see when you make that left turn. So, there's gonna be medians right in the middle of the intersection to prevent that. We do hear you. It is a long process. And it's, if we could slap signs down there right now, we would, but we can't. So, that's where Andrew is standing there, chomping at the bit to get to the microphone to help us understand the process.
Thank you, mayor and council, and to address those comments. So, first, obviously, as the mayor just stated, this is, this is speeding on 291 is crazy, to be blunt. And you're right, if we could put signs up there, I would have them up this afternoon. I can promise you that. But unfortunately, it is, as you noted, a PennDOT road, and I can tell you that we spoke with a representative from PennDOT a few weeks ago, about, probably more than a month now, I can't remember the date. And we have been in communication. I don't unfortunately have a timeline for them doing that yet or exactly what they're even willing to do for that matter. I hope that they can, they can make some positive improvements down there that will allow people to more safely cross 291. I will make sure that I communicate, and I have your address. I'll come by personally, and I'll make sure to communicate with council and mayor when I get updates from PennDOT about exactly what's going to be done and when.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, I just want to add that our relationship with PennDOT is a whole lot better now than it has been in the past. I'm just gonna stop with that. Go ahead.
I'm just gonna make a slight comment that I'm, I plan to and already have taken the steps to partner with Mr. Hayman on those communications with PennDOT because of those who you don't know, as a public servant, as a resident of Chester, as a homegrown individual from Chester, this is my community, and I'm not afraid to tell people where I live. Like, I love you all, I hope you all love me. But I live on 291, so if anybody knows where the Sunoco gas station is right there, I live right next door, directly on 291. And I have a ten-month-old son, so I take my son out of the car. Unfortunately, on 291, so I have to watch my car door. My car's been hit multiple times, insurance claims, side swipes, things like that. So, as a resident, I understand wholeheartedly where you're coming from. Me and my neighbors, both to my right and to my left, have communicated what we can do to make that area safer for our kids because we all have children in our home. Like I said, my son, my neighbor has four or five children in her home, and a young lady right next to me raises her grandson in her home. So, we communicate as neighbors on what we can do to make that specific, you know, our block a little better. But for the whole road, 291, as your councilman, as your elected official, I plan to do my job and do my due diligence to communicate and work with Mr. Hayman so that way we can try to get some things figured out. Because in that area, particularly now in my life, when you all hurt and when you all have your own concerns, I feel them as well to the utmost degree. So, I wanted to communicate that to you. Like I said, working on communication in 2025, I want to communicate that to you, that that's something that myself, the mayor, and the rest of council, we will, I will say we will do our best to try to tackle because I believe it's important, and, you know, we hear you. So, thank you for coming to City Council and being willing to speak about that. I appreciate it.
So, regarding PennDOT, the more people that voice their concerns, the more attention we can bring to those concerns. Too often, it's the same one or two or three people. I mean, we need, there's a lot of people who live on 291. There's a lot of people who've been in accidents on 291 that have had families hit. I was almost hit down there on Election Day, and it was, it was quite scary because somebody was trying to make a left turn on your block, on Engel Street. And I figured once they came out, they saw me, they'd stop. They didn't. They just kept going. I literally had to cross the center and the two lanes on the other side, and fortunately, there was nothing coming in that direction, in the northbound direction. We'll give, let's give a plug to PennDOT for some work that they are doing. And I'm gonna tell you, it's straight up, Mr. Receiver might spank me a little later, but the governor, Governor Shapiro, has gone to the agencies, all the agencies that report to him, and has told them that, hey, you guys, if you're doing something for Chester, speed it up, you know, get busy, work with us here. And one of the things that they've done is the work for those sound walls on I-95. It's a project that they did not expect to get started until 2027. Well, they've seen some low-hanging fruit in the 12th Street section of the city from Madison to pretty much Morton Avenue, and they've gone to all the neighbors, and they said, neighbor, do you want a sound wall in front of, literally across the street in front of your house where there's now nothing more than a fence and some overgrown bushes? And we communicated heavily, we worked with PennDOT, we've had hearings. The people voted, and they voted in favor of a sound wall. So, it's been approved. The sound wall's gonna probably get built as early as the end of next year or the end of this year, early next year. Now, it's the selection process of what they want that wall to look like. I think what they're gonna choose is a solid wall on the bottom, a little clear thing on top, but that's gonna be going on throughout the city. I think Forwood Street is where they're going next, and we're really excited about, you know, that type of work. To say that we have a better relationship with PennDOT than ever is really true, but when you guys come out en masse and we can take you, put you in front of them on behalf of the issues that are, that are important, makes a huge difference. It really does. Please do not dismiss the fact that your voice matters. Your bodies matter. One or two people, eh. Twenty-five, thirty people, hmm. You know, it does make a difference. It does make a difference. I want to see more residents fighting for what they believe should be going on in this town, and we'll go to bat for you. What do you want to say? Do you want to be added on? Like I said, you can do public comment, you can have three minutes if you'd like to. Come on up. That's okay. Come on up, state your name and your address.
Good morning. Tyrone Ricks, Tyrone Ricks from the Ten of Life, been giving back since 2018 to the city of Chester.
I'm sorry, you said that very fast. Tyrone?
Tyrone Ricks from Tent of Life.
Tent of Life. Oh, Tent of Life.
Yeah, Tent.
I'm sorry, I'm like...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Before you start, if there's anyone else that wants to make public comment, will you stand behind him, or I'll just consider him the last? All right, Mr. Randy, thank you. All right, go ahead. Thanks for stopping the clock.
Yes, well, I've been in the community all the time, in the city all the time, and, you know, I hear a couple of complaints as far as like, as far as job opportunities. And I wanted to see what's your plan of attack as far as council and mayor for 2025? We want the kids and everybody else to put the guns down, and the drugs, stop doing that, but what are we, what are we putting in our hands? Face them, put the guns down. People out here talking about, I feel as though the kids, like, have been thrown away because, like, they, oh, they just drug dealers, they just this and that. That's, really, that's totally false. It's people out there that want to get their life together but don't have the resources to do so. So, I wanted to see what's the council and the mayor's plan of action, you know, to help that out. Yeah.
Good, thank you. You can have a seat. All right, so I'll give a little sneak peek of what's to come with regard to that. We've created new committees, we talked about that earlier. We've reassigned each other to chair those committees and be members of those committees. All those committees have some input into legislation. When I formed this list of committees, although we presented five, and we have chairs for five and members, there were actually, how many, Justin, maybe twelve, thirteen in total? And the others are all related to what you're talking about. They're community-related committees. We're not calling them committees. What's the name we came with? The Community Advisory Boards, I think is some kind of name. Because it will not just be council members. Council members will get the first shot to chair. But to give you some idea, and I wish I had brought the list, can you remember some of things? We're gonna do arts and culture, we're going to do education-related. Can you remember some of the others? I'm sorry, I don't have the list. But we have another eight or so committees that we're really encouraging community members to work with council if council wants to be involved, you know, as well. But we're gonna get first shot at, you know, being chairs of these committees. And, yeah, that's super important to get that engagement. I think too long, the community has not been encouraged to get involved with city government in any way, shape, or form. So, we do hear you. This is something we're gonna be rolling out. Not all eight of them at one time, we'll do one or two at a time. I shared it with our deputy mayor Monday, and she was very much in favor of it. So, we together, we're gonna roll it out to the rest of council. So, sorry for the surprise, guys, but I think it's gonna be a pleasant surprise. It's exactly what Mr. Ricks is talking about. Mr. Washington, good to see you.
Good morning, good morning, good to see you. Good morning, everybody. Happy New Year. My name is Randy Washington, owner of LSN Contractors, construction managers, also president of the Washington Development Group and founder of a nonprofit called Creating Opportunities for All. I just really wanted to introduce myself to council. I know many of you want council, and as a former Chester resident, I'm really looking to give back with the companies that we have, really making impact on community development, workforce development, and even some of the things that Mr. Ricks just talked about. I think we have a plan to come in, make a difference, and really help a lot of people, change a lot of lives, and really just make a difference. So, I just wanted to introduce myself, and that's that.
Tell me your name again, please.
Randy Washington. Thank you, Mr. Washington. For those of you who may not remember, just as recent as Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving, Mr. Washington donated turkeys and meals right here in the community room. One hundred?
A little over.
A little over a hundred. When he ran out of turkeys, they had turkey breast in the back of the truck. It was really an amazing sign of your sincerity in giving back to the city of Chester. He can help us in so many ways, so I think that's a face you're gonna, you're gonna get to know. Thank you so much for making yourself available. Did you talk to, did you talk to the guy I asked you to talk to? Did you? Okay. Okay, good, really good. Yeah, he's got some really great things up his sleeve to help us down here. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. That's it for public comment. Council, you have one last shot at this. Anything else you want to share? If the directors have anything they want to share, just step up to the mic. Mr. Solicitor, anything? We do okay today? We did all right?
We did all right, over and under, though.
No, forget about that part. We have our own little personal things with these meetings. Well, thank you, guys, man. This has been a great first meeting of the year. Look for a whole lot more of them. Love the public comments, love you guys attending. For those of you watching online, we should announce the upcoming mayor's lecture series. Justin, you could do it. Who's next, and what they, do we have them coming in?
It's not quite nailed down, but we are looking at, I believe, Wednesday, January 22nd, for the first mayor's lecture of the year. Mr. Paul Faco, talking about some kind of visioning for the city of Chester.
Okay, great. If you guys have any recommendations of people that could be on the mayor's lecture, it's just someone who comes in as a subject matter expert, talking about issues, concerns, or things that we should know as citizens of the city of Chester. If you know nothing about the mayor's lecture series, they've all been recorded except for the one that the receiver did on the plan of adjustment because that was in the community room, and we don't have cameras down there. What's the website that they need to go to? Well, we know it's the city website. They could just search on lectures, I think.
Yeah. I may be wrong, but, yeah, if you go to chestercity.com, search mayor's lecture, they'll show up. There is a page where they're collected, and the receivers was recorded as well, that should be posted as well. They're also posted on the city YouTube channel.
Oh, right, that's where, that's where you want to go, the YouTube channel. All right, great, well, without...
Nope, I have something to say. So, we all know that Martin Luther King Day is coming, and shout out to all of those who are putting efforts in place to honor Dr. King. But I wanted to kind of shine a light on the sanitation workers. Dr. King had advocated for sanitation workers, and I thought it only be appropriate to honor both our in-house sanitation workers along with Public Works and some other individuals. So, information will be forthcoming, and I think we can put it on the website, the information so that they can attend and honor our people that clean our streets and whatever else it is that they do. Sometimes it's a thankless job, and it's, to me, the most dirtiest job to pick up someone's trash and not be appreciated for it. So, if you want to look at some information in regards to Dr. King and his sanitation workers, it was an incident where two sanitation workers accidentally fell into the back of the truck, and so safety concerns were made. And so, I just want to honor our sanitation workers because they do a wonderful job, and they ought to be appreciated.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just want to remind council, we're going into executive session. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All right.